Well, we might, we're still learning here a little bit. So be patient with us.
I stand in the presence of Jesus who has a me. And wonder how he can love me, but still I can't find me. So you marvel at us, how wonderful and my song shall never be. How marvelous, how wonderful is my Savior's love for me? He took my sins and my sorrows. He paid that his bare deed. He bore the burden to carry and suffered and died alone. When with a man so devoted, his face I at last shall see. It will be my joy through the ages to sing of his love for me.
Take a break, guys. Sorry. Page twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Forever.
Twenty-three.
His love endures forever. He is good, he is above all things. His love endures forever. Sing praise, sing praise. For mine hand never knows to show. His love endures forever. For the life that I've been reborn, his love endures forever. Sing praise, sing praise, sing praise, sing praise. Forever God is faithful, forever God is strong. Forever God is with us, forever, forever. The sinning son, his love endures forever. A grace of God will carry on. His love endures forever. Sing praise, sing praise, sing praise, sing praise. Forever God is faithful, forever God is strong.
We're doing three.
Yeah, sorry, thirty-four. Thirty-four with ten thousand reasons.
The sun comes up, it's a new day coming. It's time to sing our song again. Whatever may pass and whatever lies before me. When we be singing, when there be things. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, oh my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I'll worship your holy name. You're rich in love and you're so to do anything. Your name is great and your heart is kind. For all your goodness, God will be on singing. Ten thousand reasons for my heart to find. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, oh my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I'll worship your holy name. On that day when my strength is failing. The end draws near and my time has come. Still my soul will sing your praise unendingly. Ten thousand years and then forevermore. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, oh my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like never before, oh my soul. I'll worship your holy name. Yes, I'll worship your holy name. Lord, I'll worship your holy name.
Amen. Thank you very much. Let's pray before the kids go. Father, we thank you so much for the privilege and opportunity to gather together. We thank you, Lord, for being so good to us and we do worship your holy name. While we do lift up those who couldn't be with us tonight, we pray for those who have been affected by the big rains from Debbie. Lord, we just ask that you would work your will in a way. I know sometimes you use crises like that to get people's attention. So, Lord, if there's somebody that is seeking answers, may you put somebody in their path to share the gospel with them. Lord, be with us. Again, we thank you for the time and Jesus, amen. Acts chapter fourteen. We're still marching through the book of Acts. You may have noticed there was an extra song tonight. Over September, I mean, August and September, we're going to start adding little elements here and there. So that sometime in October, we'll be announcing this not as a Bible study, but as a worship service. And so it'll have a little bit of a different feel, but a lot of it will be the same. And so that's kind of what's going on there, so. All right, Acts chapter fourteen. Last week, we covered the first seven verses that recorded the time of Paul and Barnabas in Iconium. And so today, we're going to pick up and we're going to look at the next eleven verses. So if you have your Bibles open there, Acts chapter fourteen, we're going to start in verse eight. It says, "In Lystra, a man was sitting, who was without strength in his feet, had never walked and had been lame from birth. He listened as Paul spoke. After looking directly at him and seeing that he had faith to be healed, Paul said in a loud voice, 'Stand up on your feet.' And he jumped up and began to walk around. When the crowds saw what Paul had done, they shouted, saying in a Liconian language, 'The gods have come down to us in human form.' Barnabas, they called Zeus, and Paul Hermes, because he was the chief speaker. The priest of Zeus, whose temple was just outside the town, brought bulls and reeds to the gates, because he intended with the crowds to offer sacrifice. The apostles Barnabas and Paul tore their robes when they heard this, and they rushed into the crowd, shouting, 'People, why are you doing these things? We are people also, just like you, and we are proclaiming good news to you, that you turn from these worthless things to a living God, who made the heaven, the earth, the sea, and everything in them. In past generations, he allowed all the nations to go their own way, although he did not leave himself without a witness. Since he did what is good by giving you rain from heaven and fruitful seasons and filling you with food and your hearts with joy, even though they said these things, they barely stopped the crowds from sacrificing to them. So Jews came from Anioch and Iconium, and they won over the crowds. They stoned Paul and dragged him out of the city, thinking he was dead. After the disciples gathered around him, he got up, went into town, and the next day he left with Barnabas for Garvie." You may or may not have heard me say this before, but this is, this story kind of highlights what I think is some of the scariest circumstances in all of the Bible. What I find most terrifying about ministry is being successful or getting results and not pointing people to Jesus. One sad fact is that it can be proven that a person can draw a crowd, sing some songs, give a motivational speech, make some money, make people feel like they've really been impacted, get people emotional, grow a big church, all without ever pointing people to Jesus. The entertainment industry has perfected the ability to market and promote. They've expertly designed shows. If you go to a concert, you watch a movie, the lights, the volumes, the music, the camera angles, the costumes, it's all meant to elicit certain responses out of us. And if you interview most people after a movie or a concert and ask them what made it good, they're going to talk about how it emotionally impacted them. They're going to say, "They made me laugh, they made me cry, they made me scared, they made me stand in victory." And the entertainment industry has perfected this, and then they sold those skills to the church. And many churches use those tactics for success, with quotations. And to many people, those people are rock stars of church ministry. Sadly, that doesn't create disciples. That doesn't develop Christians. No, it makes church consumers, people seeking out a church for what they can get from it, instead of seeking a group to be a part of and to be in service to Jesus with. One of the blessings of COVID was that it exposed this facade of many consumer Christians. And, you know, too many people claim to be Christian, but the church to them was just a social club. And when they got shut down, it kind of exposed some of that. They said they followed Jesus, but they're biblically illiterate. Many appear to be committed Christians, but they embrace false teachings, you know, things like mysticism and paganism and hedonism and universalism. Now, they don't call it that, they don't realize it's that, because they're biblically illiterate. And it's alarming if you look at what I call the influencer theology culture and how it took off during COVID. What I mean by that is it's the people who get on their social media and they pontificate, they preach, or they say things. Influencer theology is really what I call the broad category of garbage that's taught on TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, any other social media. And some of the stuff that I've seen Christians share and promote is just pure trash. It's completely devoid of biblical truth. And just because they use the Bible doesn't mean what they say is true. And so what things am I talking about? Well, things like elevating personal experiences above the Scripture. You get on there and they're like, "Well, you know, I just, the spirit's moving in me, and I really feel like this is what the verse says." What you feel like doesn't matter. What the verse says is what the verse says. Or people that are like, "Well, I know it was real because I felt the presence of God there." It's focusing on experiences. I felt it, so it must be true. That's really mysticism. Another one is when they delude our faith into a magic spell or a formula. Come on, man. You'll hear them talk about things like hidden, I found the hidden biblical secret to good health. Or if you do these five steps, you'll receive the blessings of God. Or if you'll pray these words. Basically, they're saying that there's formulas and I call them magical incantations because I'm a smart aleck. But they say these things because they think they can control God with it. Well, that's paganism. Or maybe they're treating God like a genie. God's my, you know, God's my big genie that sits upstairs and I can ask for health and wealth and prosperity, and God gives me what I want. Because doesn't God really just want me to be happy? That's hedonism. Another one is removing the exclusivity of Jesus. We're all God's children. There's many ways to heaven. You know, what we really need to focus on is just love. They teach, there's no such thing as sin. That's universalism. And if you go and you look at a lot of that stuff, that's, it's just filled with it. And that captivated a lot of people during that time period and really exposed what they really believed. So you might be asking yourself, "Why has KJ gone off on this tangent?" Well, the reason is simple. It's because it's these types of things that false teachers will use to draw a crowd, make a spectacle. They want it to look successful. And if you look at those who are promoting these heresies, they often are popular, they get results. There's bunches of people that show up, even though you're sitting there going, "How could you fall for that?" But they're leading so many people to hell. And we must not fall for the enemy's tactic and tricking us to believe that success is anything other than faithfully pointing people to Jesus. And the deeper reason is because as we dive into the text tonight, what we're going to see here is what I think was a mistake on Paul's part. Now, remember, Acts is a narrative. It's narrative literature. Luke records things, and so he records some things that are described and not prescribed for us. Paul wasn't perfect, so he could make mistakes, and I think he made a mistake here. And when I look at the totality of the event, I think Paul erred in his approach, his method to preach Jesus. And it's not so much that Paul sinned or he sought to elevate himself, but it's without a doubt, when you read this text, it's very clear. The people looked at Paul and Barnabas instead of Jesus. So we must be diligent to only point to Jesus, not ourselves, not experiences, not formulas, not indulgences, not inclusion, not charisma, not entertainment, not benevolence, or whatever it may be. And so first, I want to explain what I mean by a mistake by Paul. I want to show you what I mean by that. And then I want to draw two lessons that we can learn from this event. So the first thing is Paul's mistake. So when you read down through that, you'll see that when they came into town in Lystra, there was a man sitting who was without strength in his feet, and he did this miracle. The people were like, "Oh, the gods have come down to us." And then Paul has to correct that and fight against it. But a few weeks ago, I asked a question at the end of the time to consider. And I said, "What role does Scripture play in helping somebody come to Christ?" So I want you to keep that question in your mind, and I'm going to fill in a little bit of context here. Lystra does not match the other places that Paul has been so far. If you look at the track and you follow it out, Paul has been mainly going to notable cities on busy travel routes. And so Lystra here is kind of off the main route. Back in verse six, you know, from before, it says that they fled and they went to Liconian towns of Lystra and Derby and to the surrounding countryside. These were country people. They were a little less cultured than the other places. The town did not have as much influence from the Roman elites, who focused on philosophy and knowledge and wisdom. And basically, what we see is a rural community with traditional and deep-seated beliefs and perceptions. And so when they jumped to this belief system, that makes sense. Also notice that they spoke a different language. It says that after this man was healed, that they began to say to themselves in a Liconian language that they had seen this miracle and what they said. So they shouted this out in their language, this is the Liconian language. So I'm confident that most of them understood Koine Greek, because it was a common language. But being that their town was kind of off the beaten path, their town still had their native language, and that was kind of their heart language. They got excited, and what came out was their Liconian language. Also notice that there's no mention by Luke, as he records this, of Paul and Barnabas visiting the synagogue. Historians claim that this town was made up mostly of Gentiles and probably did not have the ten Jewish men that's required to form a synagogue. We do know there were at least a few Jews there, because Timothy, this is his hometown, and Timothy's mom was a Jewish woman and his dad was Greek. And we know that Timothy was taught the Scriptures, but they were a tiny minority. And by the way, this is why Timothy is so useful in reaching the Gentiles later, is because he grew up in that culture. And the prominent religion would have been that Greek mythology. That's why they talk about Zeus and Hermes. So this was something that was still held from generations past. Most of the Roman culture, the Hellenistic Greek culture, had moved on from that and was embracing philosophy and wisdom and those types of things. That's where they were putting most of their focus. So this is the town that Paul and Barnabas roll up into, and they're going to start preaching. And we're not given the details of his initial message, how many people were there. It says this man was here, he listened to him, but there obviously were crowds. And so what we do know is that Paul was preaching the gospel, so he was talking about the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus. But without a basis of Scripture in this town, how did he connect with them? I think it's obvious he didn't. Because when he performs this miracle, which by the way, is an absolutely powerful demonstration, this man was lame from birth, which means that the people knew that he was not the random charlatan who moves in and has killed somebody that they didn't know. This guy was lame from birth, that they knew this was a legit miracle. But their reaction demonstrates that Paul had not made that connection. And this is where I find that I think Paul made a mistake. He used signs and wonders back in Iconium when seeking to convince the unbelieving people there. But back in Iconium, there was a good population of Jews and other people who attended the synagogue and had learned the Scriptures. They would have understood that miracles are a validation of the message. They should have. These believers had no basis for that. Let me prove it to you. Hold your place there and turn to Exodus chapter four. In Exodus chapter four, Moses is being confronted by the Lord and told that he needs to go and free Israel from the captivity in Egypt. And just like most of us, Moses is like, "Well, I can tell them, but what if they don't listen?" So look at verse one, it says, "Moses answered, 'What if they won't believe me and will not obey me, but say, Lord, the Lord did not appear to you? The Lord asked him, 'What is that in your hand?' And the staff, he replied. Throw it on the ground, he said. So Moses threw it on the ground. It became a snake, and he ran from it. The Lord told Moses, 'Stretch out your hand and grab it by the tail.' So he stretched out his hand and caught it, and it became a staff in his hand. This will take place, he continued, so that they will believe that the Lord, the God of their ancestors, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob, has appeared to you. In addition, the Lord said to him, 'Put your hand inside your cloak.' So he put his hand inside his cloak, and when he took it out, his hand was diseased, resembling snow. Put your hand back inside your cloak, he said. So he put his hand back inside his cloak, and when he took it out, it had again become like the rest of his skin. If they will not believe you and will not respond to the evidence of the first sign, they may believe with the evidence of the second sign. And if they don't believe even these two signs, or listen to what you say, take some water from the Nile, pour it on the ground. The water you take from the Nile will become blood on the ground." So what God did here in order to prove the message was he gave Moses some signs and wonders that he could do in front of the people. So he gave Moses this ability to perform these signs to prove the authenticity of the message. Now, for Gentiles, signs and wonders were still impressive, but what really turned their crank is knowledge, wisdom, philosophy, those types of things. So now turn to First Corinthians. I have it here, so I'll let you turn it there. But in First Corinthians, verse eighteen through twenty-five, Paul's confronting the divisions in the church. There's groups in there like, "Well, I was baptized by Apollos, and I was baptized by this person," and they're creating some division. First Corinthians, chapter one, verse eighteen through twenty-five. And so he's confronting that. And in his reasoning, he takes this little side quest to defend his methodology in preaching the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus Christ for salvation from sin. Notice what he says about people and what they're seeking from religion. It says, "For the word of the cross is foolishness to those who are perishing, but it is the power of God to those who are being saved. For it is written, 'I will destroy the wisdom of the wise, and I will set aside the intelligence of the intelligent.'" Where is the one who is wise? Where is the teacher of the law? Where's the debater of this age? Hasn't God made the world's wisdom foolish? For since in God's wisdom the world did not know God through wisdom, God was pleased to save those who believed through the foolishness of what is preached. For the Jews ask for signs, and the Greeks seek wisdom. But we preach Christ. But we preach, Christ crucified, a stumbling block to the Jews and foolishness to the Gentiles. Yet to those who are called, both Jews and Greeks, Christ is the power of God and the wisdom of God, because God's foolishness is wiser than human wisdom, and God's weakness is stronger than human strength. You see what they're seeking? They're looking for something to validate. And so the Greeks, he had to talk to in a different way. The Jews, though, should have known signs and wonders. And so again, this is just to prove that signs and wonders are a way to prove to the Jews the validity of the message. And so as Paul was preaching here, he decided to win, to heal this man. He saw that the man, it says here that he had the faith to be healed, so Paul healed him. And that would have been an amazing sign and wonder, but the people did not take it that way. The crowd seized onto the miracle, and they jumped to assumptions based on their understanding of the supernatural. They didn't have a basis from which to see this. And their basis, their understanding, was paganism, which was of the Greek culture. And so I think Paul had made a mistake here by not considering the vast change in culture from town to town that he had been. And so when he goes in and he does what would have normally won a lot of people over, it's taken in a totally different, totally different way. And so I think this is a learning experience for Paul. I think miracles to the Gentiles are not usually connected to the message, therefore, they become a spectacle unto themselves, miracles for the sake of miracles. And this is why people respond the way that they do. They only see the power of Paul, not the power of the one Paul is preaching. And that's the reason he has such a severe and intense reaction in verse 14. Look at verse 14. It says, "The apostles Barnabas and Paul tore their robes when they heard this, and they rushed into the crowd." They're like, "Oh, no, we gotta fix this." And if you'll notice that second message, which we're gonna get into next week, he actually switches and changes, and he goes back to, "God created you," and he connects it in a way that they would understand. You've seen the evidence in creation. But I think here, he just missed it. And so it was a learning experience, and it leads to a change in Paul's methods in reaching and discipling Gentile believers. You'll notice for the remainder of Acts and in Paul's letters, that the focus is not on signs and wonders, but on articulated truth. The few miracles that we do see are mostly in relation to Jews. And when you get into the letter to the Corinthian church, Paul's correcting a lot of improper use and emphasis on signs and wonders, because that had become their major focus. And so they were overly concerned with displaying gifts instead of getting right with Jesus, because if you read that book, they're a mess. But they spoke in tongues. They did these miracles. Paul says, "No, y'all are a mess. Y'all got sins that even the Gentiles don't do." And so that shouldn't be the focus. There was all kinds of rank sin in that church. So I think this mistake put Paul and Barnabas on the defense. It kind of pushed them back on their heels when the crowd reacted this way. And we're gonna look at the rest of this next week, but as Paul defends himself and he has more interactions, I don't want you to miss the fact that ultimately, what happened is some Jews showed up, won the crowds over, and Paul was stoned and left for dead. It avoided being stoned in Iconium, but the Jews got in here. And so that's what I want us to look at tonight. That's kind of the idea of this mistake maybe that Paul made. And I'm not adamant about that, but I think there's some lessons that we can learn there, is how Paul had gone in there and how this turn of events kind of happened. And so the first thing that I think we can learn here is, we need to contextualize. What I mean by that is, the message never changes, but the way or the means in which the message is communicated must connect to those we're seeking to share the message An easy example is language. You have to speak a language that they understand. It seems easy to understand, however, this is one of the biggest hangups for some people. In order to contextualize, in order to do that, you have to do some homework. I was part of a missionary backpacking team that did ethnographic research for career missionaries. And so what we would do is, we would go get them the information that they needed to present the gospel in a contextually effective way. One missionary that we worked with said that we put him years ahead in reaching a people group, because we had gone in and got information. Or he would have walked in like this, done something that totally didn't connect and messed it up. Paul and Barnabas somehow missed this, and maybe it was due to the language barrier in some extent. Maybe it was the backwoods thinking of the townsfolk. You know, these weren't the cultured Greek philosophers. They were those that hadn't been influenced by the Hebrew religion. One commentary I read actually called them ignorant pagans. Maybe it was Paul's desire to see this man healed. I mean, I have compassion on people. This guy was sitting here, and Paul said he had faith, so Paul healed him. Maybe there was some pride carrying over from the miracles that they had performed in Iconium. We don't know. I mean, anything would be speculation, because the text doesn't tell us. But what is very clear is that Paul did not connect with the crowd. And so when the miracle was performed, they jumped to this wild accusation, this wild idea that the gods had come down to them, and he was Zeus, and he was Paul. There's some that think maybe this idea of the gods coming down to them was how Paul was talking about Jesus and how God had come down and become man so that he could die for their sins, and they got all that mixed up. Again, we don't know. We just know that they didn't connect. Listen, in a little book called How to Exegete Your Culture, Ed Stetzer quotes Dean Gillian, and he says this. He said, "He reminds us of the importance of good to contextualization in cultural exegesis, because contextualization is a delicate enterprise, if there ever was one. The evangelist and the mission strategist stand on a razor's edge, aware that if you fall to either side, it has terrible consequences. If you fall to the right, you end in obscuritism. You become obscure. You're of no means, which means that you have no purpose. But you're so attached to your conventional ways of practicing and teaching the faith that you veil its truth and the power from those who need to see it with very different eyes. If you slip off to the left, you tumble into syncretism. That's where everything just comes together and is all one and the same. So vulnerable to the impact of paganism and its multiplicity of forms that you compromise the uniqueness of Jesus. And you're really preaching another gospel, which is not the gospel." So there's this balance here. You gotta find, as you contextualize. That book continues, and it says, "Many churches today are isolated from culture and insulated against any friction with those they perceive to be foreigners or outsiders, which leads both to a false understanding of the gospel and a misleading relationship with the world." As had been illustrated so far, some people need to be pushed to engage the culture more faithfully. Others need to be pushed to preach Christ more faithfully. And you find that edge. We're gonna see later that Paul actually becomes a master of this. Paul learns from this experience, and he becomes a master. And when I was trained and we were talking about contextualizing to a gospel, guess who we used as an example? Paul, because he becomes so good at this. He learned from this particular situation. And you're gonna see, you can go read Philippians, you can go read Philippians. You can read a lot of his letters, and you'll see what he does to contextualize. And so that's the first lesson, is you gotta look at where you're going and what you're doing to make sure that it connects. But here's the second lesson, and this is by far the most important lesson. You don't hear anything else I say. Keep Jesus the focus. No matter what methods or strategies are used, they must never become the focus. Paul miraculously healed a man. That's not a bad thing. I'm sure this guy was pretty happy with that. And I fully believe Paul had only good intentions, but it had negative results. I'm not saying that Paul put the focus on the miracle, but the people did. And so we need to think about that as we contextualize. Keep Jesus the focus. And here's a few things that have become focuses in the church over the years. We'll talk about a few different things, and step on my toes while I was writing, and so I'll step on yours now, maybe. But there's some historical things, things like liturgy. That's the big fancy word that just means how worship is done, the right way to do a service. Is there an order of service? And how everything has to look, and how everything has to go. Some people, they can't wrap their mind around doing a service differently. Or maybe it's behavior modification. That becomes the focus. We gotta get people to act right. I love the, Casting Crowns has a song where it says, "You gotta change the heart before you change the shirt." But a lot of Christians are focused on making people behave properly. Y'all remember a little experiment our nation did called prohibition? That worked out well. But you see that. You see it with clothing. You see it with being civilized. There was a missionary moment in history when missionaries thought that in order to reach people with the gospel, we had to first get them civilized, so that then we could teach them the gospel. That focus was there. That became the focus then. Or maybe it's the charismata, the miracles, the prophecies, the being slain in the spirit, the speaking in tongues. You know, there's churches that handle snakes, and they tell you that's not their main focus, but they do it at every service. So those are things that we've historically seen. Right now, some of the things that you can see are dynamic speakers. One of the biggest shames on the church in America right now is that we will elevate somebody who has a talent for public speaking before they have the character to be before people. Just because they're a great speaker and can draw a crowd, they'll still set them up there. Or what about stimulating music? Christian music has never been as good as it is now, I don't think. But even, you know, that can sometimes become the thing. Or incredible technology. These things are easy, and they get picked on a lot. You know, mega churches with stages, lights, smoke machines, bands with super talented musicians. We're quite good enough to make it in Nashville, so they'll go play at a church. You know, that type. But many churches are built around that particular personality and that particular type of things. And so, again, that's that entertainment skills being sold at the church that I mentioned earlier, but that's happening. You know, there's some other things, though, that are sneaky. These are good things that have become the focus. I think a lot of times, we'll take the good in exchange for the best, and that's not good for us. But here's some sneaky things. How about benevolence and compassion ministries? I love them. I support them. We ought to do it. We ought to be taking care of people. You got to. But somewhere along the line, meeting needs and sharing Christ easily becomes just meeting And I'll say this, Sharon, she laughs when I say this, because it comes across as harsh, but it's true. A lot of times, the church is more concerned with keeping people comfortable on their way to hell than they are about making sure they're not going to hell. So those benevolence and those compassion ministries, which are good things, become an idol unto themselves and draw the focus off of Jesus. How about church culture? Have you noticed we got a Christian version of everything? I mean, if you want to, Christians have created their own little bubble within society, and you don't ever have to get out of it. We even got our own language, Christeneeze. You know, we talk funny to a lot of people. We get so isolated and so insulated that we don't even know how to talk to someone who isn't a Christian. "Oh, I don't want to be around them. They might influence me." Well, you might influence them. Tell them about Jesus. You know, this actually goes too far the other way. Instead of saying, "Okay, I'm gonna keep myself in a Christian bubble," this is falling on the other side of that, where the church service is meant to just entertain people and get a big crowd. I'm gonna drop a little theological truth bomb on you. Church worship is meant for Christians to worship Jesus. That's why we gather together as Christians to worship Jesus. Folks that need to know Jesus are welcome, but the service is not for them. And so some people have transformed a worship service into nothing more than a concert with a great motivational speech. And more often, they're focused on making people comfortable in their sin, instead of calling people to repent and turn to Jesus. We want you to be comfortable here, so we're not gonna mention any of your sins, or, you know, we don't want to offend you in that way. Those things are sneaky, because you do. You want to be sensitive. You want to understand that people are dealing with things that are complex. It's not as simple as, you know, changing your shoes. They're dealing with complex issues that are deeply ingrained in some aspects of their life. And so you want to show them that you actually have the answer, but you can't go too far the other way. My areas, and I'll just be honest with you, because I like to be transparent, my areas are in the areas of intellectual and theological integrity and personal preferences. Now, what I mean by that? Intellectual integrity and theological integrity means that I have a strong desire to say things the right way. And my tendency is to be overly precise, as opposed to being too simple. So I'll give you an example. When Jeremiah made a decision to follow Christ and wanted to be baptized, I waited a long time. Because when I asked him the question, "Why do you want to be baptized?" He's the preacher's kid, and he had to say it exactly the way I wanted to hear it. Now, I didn't tell him what to say, but I wanted him to understand exactly what it was. So if he says, "You know, I want to be baptized, because I believe in Jesus," nope, not gonna happen. "You want to be baptized, because you are identifying with the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus, and you are making a public declaration of your decision to join together in communion with our church." That doesn't matter. I was expecting a, how old were you then? Ten? Ten-year-old to articulate theologically what had been through who knows how many years of school to fine-tune. But that's one of my tendencies. People don't say it exactly like I like it, then I'm gonna be harsh on them, and I'm gonna judge them, because apparently, they're an idiot, because they don't understand theology properly. That's a failure on my part. That's an issue I struggle with. And I put the proper theology in place of Jesus, and I'm like, "Oh, that shouldn't take his place. Jesus is first." The other one that I talk about is my personal preferences. Like, I have a style of music that I like. I have certain ideas about the way I think things should go. I have a preferred Bible translation. I have a preferred type of chair. And I have opinions about a lot of that types of, like, you know, we go into church. I've been to some churches that, I think comfort is a big problem in America. We want everybody to be comfortable. Might as well just start doing like the movie theaters, where you get the recliners and the heated seats, and somebody brings you refreshments. But those are areas that I struggle with. And so as we think about all of this, you know, this is some complex stuff. So it may have sounded like I was kind of harsh on Paul at the beginning, saying he messed up, but he was the first one to do this. I mean, when I'm the first one in, I usually mess up too. But I think there's some lessons. We need to contextualize. We need to know who we're talking to. We need to, you know, realize that we need to have a way of connecting. And I'm not thinking it has to be long and drawn out. I mean, the trips that I took, maybe there were two or three major points that the missionaries needed to be aware of. But then we also need to remember that it's about Jesus. He has to stay the focus. He is the author and the perfecter of our faith. We keep our eyes on Him. So here's two questions to end with. What's the role of Scripture in leading a person to Christ? So contextually. And then question number two, what things have caused you to lose focus on Jesus? We all have those things. Paul's constantly encouraging his readers to remember that, so it's obviously something we should remember. I learned something in school, because I've been in school a long time. If the teacher repeats it two or three times, it's probably important. Jesus first. All right, and with that, we will start our time of discussion. Thanks for joining us online, and we're so happy that you did. And you take these questions and think about it, and then you can gather with us again next week. next week.